Yeah, you know. But I'll just.
To start. I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order for the Tom and Poppy Planning Board meeting on March twentieth twenty twenty three. Uh, we could stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of South America. Nation of God introduced well. The repeating.
Everybody who started the draft of the minutes from last month's meeting, were there any corrections, additions, solutions? Hearing none motion to accept as presented.
I make a motion.
And second, motion for. And the second to accept, any further discussion, hearing none or in favor, any cause? Motion carried. Um, on our agenda tonight. Is the mapstone site plan review. Um, public hearing on the site plan submitted for the project located at thirty one ninety one Poppy Center Road. Text map number zero one six dot dash zero two dash zero two dot zero. Um. It was advertised. Okay, and I know I got my notice. They got all the receipts in.
Yep.
Okay. Um, as in other meetings, I'm going to recuse myself from this. It's um. Our farm is a neighbor farm and we've done business with mapstones. Uh, so for that, Kevin Corson will be taking over leadership on this again.
Oh, goodie. So, um. It is a public hearing, but we haven't finalized plans or designs, so we'll probably have to continue.
Well, I think that um what we can do is open the public hearing and then let's see happens from there.
Yeah, did we open it? We didn't open it last.
I.
No, we just agreed on having, yeah, yeah. Um. My question on procedure on that is um will seeker be. Needed for this application at some point?
We can, we can do that um now before the public hearing, or we can do it at the close of. That's. Some people think it should be done in advance of the public hearing.
Yes.
So, um, just as a point of reference. It uh as a general matter, do you prefer to have have seekers done prior to this public hearing?
Some of the times they have been, but if we're waiting on some information, they have. Later.
Okay.
Yeah, if we don't have. Everything.
See what we're gonna have.
Yeah.
Certainly.
Not that it'll have a great impact on secret and and get a secret application of of document from them, yes.
Yes.
All right, so um. And I guess I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. Check it. Carl, all in favor?
Aye.
And when opposed? Very public hearing. So, anyone that wishes to speak um. For or against the project, just. Stand up, approach the board, state your name and address and uh. We'll take it from there.
Unless you want to have the uh mapstones make a small presentation first?
I guess we could do that, sure.
Project, yes.
Yeah, just tell us a little bit about it.
Well, first of all, we got.
And they received our stuff from you guys.
Okay, yeah, Wednesday.
Okay.
Um. Here's some new maps. For everybody. You let's do, I guess, distribute them. And I'll share one here. Yeah. Right there.
Yes.
Um. Is there a C D or no uh?
Electronic.
Electronic. Version of the map?
Um, I don't know. I I assume there is, but we don't have one.
We'd not.
We can talk for a site planner and architect and have one or something.
Yeah, they probably have it. There.
Yeah, there are. Oh, yeah. Come on, one or two.
Back box of coffee.
Well, take two.
I'm sorry.
So the thing we have people in the audience, if you go through the whole plan of what you guys are gonna plan on doing, there's that paper.
We have, we have a brief writing up on what what the operation.
Sure. It doesn't have to have all the detail, but basically what you're planning to do, just a synopsis of you, an overview, yeah.
Right, where's your, where's the paper though? But so anyhow, we're we're applying for a wedding, we're. On our property at thirty one ninety one. That's who to address here, we're we're.
Address the board and they can listen.
Okay, we are. You know, applying to be allowed to hold host weddings at this property. It's an agritourism. Venue um because we're an active dairy farm. And we are planning on hosting weddings and. Using the house for the part wedding parties to stay in and and you know, other agritourism events potentially. Um, we. Purchased the property three years ago and cleaned it up and and got it set up for our own children's weddings. And then decided to apply to have it so we could actually try to make money. With the site. Um, we are. You know, the na- nature of it is is we're gonna host weddings on weekends. Not, you know, it's not a seven day a week, you know, event. Barn, it's just we're planning on having weekend weddings. Um, because we also work ourselves. Um, and we'll have to man the events um.
No, we, one of us will be on the property the day of the event.
For the whole event?
Yes, yes.
For the whole event, yeah, starting at the beginning of the day to help with managing where people are going to. If D J's coming or setting up and much like.
Parking and parking and.
So we can over make sure that things are running properly and people are using the property according to what we've outlined.
Yeah, the property, we're we're not set up to make food there, we're all the events will be catered. Um, the uh bathrooms will be invented um for each event um.
I don't be required to have a liquor um license as per.
And event insurance, yeah. For our own protection and there's.
Are you gonna do any holiday weddings during the summer? Uh, is it still on a Monday or, you know, Monday holiday or?
It's possible. I think we put it in there. It's one of the notes that came over on holiday, but primarily it would be a wedding.
Weekend.
Yeah.
Weekend, you're speaking Friday evening, Saturday, Sunday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, some people do get Friday married.
But again, the house would be open to be rented during the week leading up to.
Yep.
The event, but no large. You know, the large.
Events.
Events.
And and the house. The house season will often be rented.
Yes.
It's the Airbnb.
Right, when but as through an agritourism type of. Thing, we're we're planning on offering farm tours and, you know, it's a, it's advertised as a stay at a farm.
Yep.
So. It's not just a random property that's gonna have people coming and going, it's. There's a purpose. Um, did I leave out anything?
Did you mention the hours it was gonna be?
So we put in our write-up that um. You know, events would end loud music by eleven. And that. The everyone would have to be cleared out and lights off that had anything to do with the event by midnight. Um, garbage and everything would have to be put into receptacles that had a closed lid. We would be removing at the event at the end of the weekend. All the, you know, trash from the um dumpsters. Hmm. Yes.
That's the gist of it, I guess.
Yep. Okay. Anyone from the public? Guys can.
Okay.
Sit for now, I guess. Anyone?
I'd like to. A lot of farmers have bought land, or Dan Palladino.
Okay, Dan.
A lot of farmers have bought land and barns and I've watched them all fall down and. Rumble and Pete, every farm that he's bought and beautified and. Protected all his farmland and now that property up there. If you saw what it looked like before, no offense to people that owned it, I mean, it's gorgeous and beautiful, so. You know, kudos to Pete, you know, that's what that's how farms are gonna survive in the future, so I love what they've done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sue?
Sue Smith, um, eight one three Route twenty neighbor. Um, just a couple of comments, um. I know the town doesn't have a. Sound ordinance per se, and I guess what's a little bit of definition of. Loud music. And. Will the doors be open on the barn while the music's playing? And. You know, just, we know from the prior people that were there that the music just, it does carry. Um, down through the hills and the valleys through all Pompeii and I guess a little bit of definition of. What is loud music? Um, again, it is a farm, it looks beautiful, they've done a fantastic job up there and um cleaning things up and observing. Um. What Pompeii is. Um, but I guess I, a little bit definition on that, are are the doors open or not, because it does. All the doors. Our journey of those opens to the west.
Yeah, with the Kelish uh music, when it was indoors, you could hear it out, or just when they use the outdoor?
It it was there. In a theater.
Amphitheater.
Corrected it.
Yep.
That way.
Yep.
Um, the only question is, are you gonna do fireworks? Um, out of. I'll speak for dairy farmers, you're a dairy farmer too. Pete and Melissa. But also the horse farmers um or horse people that some of the neighbors, other neighbors have set them off. And either damage fences or scaring the animals um. Just like to know what the thought is on the fireworks.
O- okay, as far as fireworks goes, the town put in their list of things, you know. We're allowed to do fireworks, but we have to get a seek a permit. And that they can last no longer than fifteen minutes. Um, fireworks is not our, you know, main goal. We had, we had a fireworks display at my son's wedding as a special. Thing, but that's not something we intend to do, you know, for. Just anybody, it's, you know, but if but if it were to happen or were to be requested. It would have to follow the, you know, what the town is requesting, which is just, you know, fifteen minute max and, you know, would have to get a permit in order to do it.
Nine and eleven.
Nine and eleven, right, but I, you know, being a farmer, I completely understand. I don't like it, you know, when my cows run through fences either and horses are worse, so. Um, you know, we certainly are very aware of that and would be very respectful of that because. You know, our neighbors are important to us. Don't wanna be bad neighbors.
And that would be something that the wedding party would specifically request for that.
Right.
Wedding.
Yep, and they're.
Knowing that there's probably gonna be fireworks due to the wedding itself.
I see what you're saying.
It's very, yeah.
What's the next thing?
I use, I use a little more. And as far as the music goes, um, the music will be like the reception music will be indoors, but the doors will be open because. Just for ventilation purposes, but um from the two weddings that we've had there already, when we spoke to. Neighbors, Smith included, we were told they couldn't hear the music at all, so. You know, I'm I'm hoping that that's the case, but you know, that's one of those things where. You know, it'll it'll have to be a work in progress if if there's a problem, but you know, we we also experienced the, when the Kelish has had their music. Venue across the street and, you know, I could hear it quite well. I got to experience all the concerts from the field. Um, but. You you know, the the barn seems to contain the sound very well and. You know, we're, once again, we're not in the business of upsetting our neighbors, so. I I would like to think that we could work, you know, work work with them, but we, you know, we're gonna set time limits and. And uh, you know, keep the band indoors, it's not gonna be a um outdoor blowout, so.
And that Kelish amphitheater, whatever that is, that acts as almost like a megaphone.
Yeah.
Yeah, that does does carry it. Um, anyone else wanna speak? Just stand and state your name.
James Loomis, number four road. I mean, I think it is a. A great way for farmer, if he has bought the land or the house with it, rather than all of a sudden trying to subdivide off or sell off the house or whatever, it's a good way to. Um. Keep it all intact and then you. Make a little income, maybe somewhere down the road when their kids might want the house, so it could be turned into a full residence, so I just think it's a great idea and I'm. Pretty certain that if there was any complaints, I'm pretty certain Pete would. You know, and it shouldn't, he should have to. You know, make sure if there was specific complaints, he would should have to take care of it, but I believe he would.
Thank you. Anyone else? And you folks that just came in, this is the public hearing on the mapstone property. Speaking. Now, public can speak, so anyone else wanna speak about it? So, um.
Well, we can, I think we can close the public hearing.
And then go on to our adjustments, Dan, right, Dan?
Totally unrelated to Pete's project, I do have, I I don't know how the process works, but I would like the opportunity to speak related to my project. Um, but I don't want the public hearing to close and then not have that opportunity to be able to say something.
Well, the public hearing is specific, Dan, to their.
That's why.
Yeah, it's just very specific to their project and we've received the information on yours. But that will be a separate, yeah, separate public hearing um. So, uh. With that, we have a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by John, second by Carl. All in favor?
Aye. Remove.
Thanks for the presentation. I I know we've heard it before, but it's still everyone here can hear it. So now to get down to some of the nitty gritty that we talked about.
Aye.
Um, and the uh, and do you guys agree with the email that we put together on? The proposal of what was gonna happen in time and that sort of thing?
Yeah, and I sort of, I took what you had passed along and incorporated it in the previous write-up, so I have that and I included the times and. Yes, we did, um, I think the only thing that we we, you know, just wanna make sure that it, the house is, just to be clear that the house will be rented. Um, if there isn't an event, like.
Outside of the, yeah, yeah.
Continue to be rented.
And I, and and I think we've found out that um that also would fall under the agritourism.
Yes, it certainly can, the right findings.
Right.
Right, yes, that they have presented, um, it does seem appropriate, that's up to this board.
Do do we need any specific things for the house? Being rented out.
That's gonna all be codes?
Just code stuff in terms, terms of occupancy and fire protection and.
Right.
It's in uh ADA accessibility. Is it inaccessible?
No.
It is not handicap accessible.
Is that a requirement on the agritourism? Probably not.
The codes officer did come in and look, check all of our fire and and such, so so he's done that.
Is that a requirement for um codes to have? The accessibility?
I guess it depends on.
Accommodation.
The use of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, if Airbnb's fall under that.
Well, first of all, it's not an Airbnb specifically.
It'll be agritourism, okay.
Agritourism use, and I'd have to look at that question.
Okay.
I don't know the answer on hand, if it, if it's a place of public accommodation now, a- as part of the agritourism, does it need the um accessible?
Be accessible. How difficult would that be?
Yes, is do we need to be agritourism in order to continue to rent it?
It it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be very easy, that's, it'd be expensive.
I don't mean have to be upstairs, but probably for downstairs.
Yeah, I did, you know, it it would require ramps and.
Yeah.
Probably wider doors and things, you know, we use the existing structure.
It's an old farmhouse.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I I I get that, but since it's under agritourism, it might fall under a different set of rules.
Whether it falls under a public accommodation, we'll have to find out.
Check that out, okay. Um. Uh, anything else that was different in what? You forwarded that?
I'll tell you.
It's.
One thing was the wording on it saying we, we were trying to decide if, the the way it was worded, it sounded like we had to rent. Uh, rent the bathrooms.
I know.
Which bathrooms will be rented, but you know, that was. We weren't sure if there was some reason why it's, that we had to rent them or that was just a wording issue.
Yeah, it might, it's just wording, but um but we're saying is that. That your response.
Yeah, which.
Right, well, we would make sure.
That they require that, yeah.
Yeah.
For rental.
Right, so then you pass it on to them to do, but it's ultimately.
Right, okay. Same with the caterer, you know, we require it the event to be done with a licensed caterer. So.
Um. Anyone see anything on any of the maps that needs uh attention? Is this the first time you guys have seen the maps?
It is, the the revised map, so maybe you can take a minute and just go over um. Those comments, the parking inside circle circulation notes.
And we were looking for some uh lighting on there also, weren't.
It's all.
Lighting, thanks, there's a noted, okay. Oh, it's okay, there you go.
All of those, I choose, watching.
We do it.
How, um.
It'd be nice. I think it'll be part of that.
We want part of the submission.
Yeah.
Sure, it's up to where the eye.
So.
Give you the whole package here.
We're gonna give them to the to the town clerk and have the stamina for everyone, so we can take that. With the next one. Yeah. So, um.
They what I think with the downward lighting, everything is downwards facing, the the lamp posts are, were original to there and.
Yeah, those, these lights up front are not compliant, but there is, they're existing.
Yeah. It's.
And I always think there won't be.
There's, yeah, we had them on for the entire.
Really quite pretty.
Weddings and and they, you know, lit up the driveway, but that was about it.
Yeah.
We have the sign too, the proposed sign.
Now, if we can just start, um, Kevin, if you wanna go down this list, the party inside circulation and just ask for the. You know, it's, you guys were looking at it all for the first time. If you will get. Site circulation on the plan is appropriate for parking. And. Well.
So. And that's based on the, so say, uh, the appropriate parking for event being separated from the event space and also showing appropriate entry and event space area and parking area subject to the following width of the driveway. Um. Event space noted on the plan needs to be gravel divided.
So, yep, so we'll stop there, so it's um twelve foot.
Minimum.
Width.
I need some of that.
Yep.
So, okay.
And the turnaround would just be the parking lot itself.
Correct.
Yeah.
Sort of a a loop. Got it, it will have a. You know, a loop, loop all the way around it, so.
Well, that gravel drive would actually go.
No, no, not the gravel, the gravel drive is the access and then the parking.
Oh, yeah, I cited the parking spaces.
I see, I'm sure, yeah, okay.
Yeah, they're all dimensioned now.
And sufficient handicapped spaces, um. If the clearance between structures, that could be not a problem. Uh. Yeah, so the option is that if the if the surface doesn't work in the future, you put. Equipment you have, that would take you an afternoon.
That's lost.
Exactly.
Excuse me, do you have your narrative?
Yeah.
It's it's right here.
And it's incorporated what we had.
Yes.
Yeah, yes. Should we be going from that, Jamie? Instead of this?
No, that's okay.
It's.
Yeah.
We're good, you're. It has to line up with what their narrative is also, right?
Mm-hmm.
Any changes? Uh, okay, aisles, proposed parking yard drive. Drive aisles must be twenty foot parking space, ten by twenty. Total parking space is a hundred and fifty. Uh, based on. Hundred and sixty-six person capacity, handicap parking spaces provided in one spaces.
They've done all that.
Yeah, it's done all that, the uh plan should maximum capacity is two sixty-six, that's for.
Noted.
Noted, exterior light fixtures have been shown on the plan, fixtures must be dark sky compliant, downed, directed and shielded. Spikes. Great, starting walkway lighting that's also be shown in the plans for both fixtures. Now, the one question, yeah, that's on there, is the wedding party will use the main driveway and probably park in there, not the parking lot, but will they park at the house?
Um, we actually had most of the vehicles that were not specifically needing to be, right, we had them moved, so in photographs, you're not having a cluttered space.
Okay, yeah.
And so, so. Um, they moved their cars over to the parking. Yes, and meanwhile, they're just staying in the house pre-event, they were parked in the park, uh. In the driveway, but, yeah.
And this parking lot is for the events, not for the rental of the property?
Right, I mean, if we were just doing uh uh the renting the house, then it would be.
Park right there.
Yeah.
Which is fine. Um. And you have a cut sheet for the sign?
The sign.
Did you have the sign somewhere?
Oh, we do have a cut sheet for the sign.
And and size, we have a.
Thirty-six by forty-eight.
Is, do we have a size requirement? I thought we had a size requirement, you know, signs. So many.
Nothing that came through on the email from what I noticed.
It's in our code. Yeah, you know what the sign?
What's the question?
This sizing of sign.
I don't, you know, it's better to size for it.
Yeah, it's like three square feet, nine square feet, there is a.
You know, there is not folding.
Yeah, it would be twelve square feet, like I suppose.
We have two lots.
It's. Right.
Justin's. Stop for you guys, right, so. Um.
The sign will be. The sign will have a small light shining on it from. You know, like a, maybe even a solar light just from a few feet away.
I don't know, you know, if the board, if the board's considering. Moving forward with an approval, we'd have to do seeker, obviously, right, um, the sign, we really haven't had a chance to get a grip on it and.
Size-wise and everything.
The materials and the size and so forth, we could save that, you know, do the approval and save the.
And and make those contingent.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that's it, they, we can come back and revisit that. Or you can.
We're not planning to put a sign up immediately, so I mean, I don't prefer that, not to slow this down.
No, but what we're talking about is we can approve the application.
Right.
Contingent caveats that you're gonna do these.
We're gonna come back for the site.
And the sign is gonna meet our requirements.
We didn't really have any guidance on the requirements.
Yeah.
It'll be part of site plan approval, like what's appropriate for the, for the area. Right, and I don't know that. That we, as far as had a chance to digest that portion. Of it.
We just made sure the sign was smaller than our farm sign. And it's half as big as the vote for James Loomis signs that was along the way last election. We figured we're good.
Yeah, way less than that.
But it can be reconsidered.
Uh. After the approval is a contingency, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Um. That's the sign, bathrooms are being used on plans. Garbage dumpster. And. Owner operator responsible for providing appropriate number for the sort of speech events. Houses permitted as part of the agro section, we've got that, garbage disposal, you guys are taking care of that. Uh, amplified music must be with inside the barn structure. And not exceed the ambient noise level at surrounding area properties uh with a decibel level of seventy decibels at the property line.
Who who would be measuring that and how?
And well, uh, foreman would rent a decibel meter and when you're having a wedding, stand at the property line. And seventy decibels, that'd be, have to be pretty loud music in the barn. To uh push it out that far. You know, and they're trying to protect the neighbors and that's something that um. And actually.
I would admit it, game, I'm like, more than anything else.
Yeah, that's one of those things that you may. Decide the band should be here instead of here in the barn and play with those. Things on where they're located. Decide the band should be here instead of here in the barn and play with those things on where they're located. Like, not in the open doors facing Sue's barn. Unless she likes that music.
Her house will look much better.
Depending on music.
It makes them comfortable, yeah.
Is there, is there presently an a noise ordinance in the town?
No.
So how, if that's the case, how can it be?
It could, it could be a requirement of site plan, that's what the planning board does, we actually can make requirements such as that it may not be in the in the code, but um.
And this particular um uh DB is gleaned from other um. Other towns that have actual ordinances and what's considered reasonable.
And even your workers working around equipment are covered under uh accessible requirements and afterward hearing protection over, uh, what is it? Ninety? I think it's, what is it? Eighty-five decibels, you know, working around trackers and whatnot, you have to have hearing protection, so there are some regulations, but seventy is not. Um at the property lines, that's not that low. Although the weddings I seem to go to, maybe because I'm getting old, and start to can't talk to anybody anymore inside the wedding venue. Maybe there's a reason for that, I don't know. Uh, okay, holidays and weekends. So the holiday thing. You wanna keep that in there?
Yes, please.
Okay. Uh music ends by eleven, anyone have an issue with that? Here on the board?
No.
Yeah? Uh and everybody and lights out by midnight. Uh no onsite food preparation, alcohol served will be in compliance with liquor authority. Fireworks between the hours of nine and eleven. Just call me so I can put my dog in a crate. One dog that definitely doesn't like fireworks, but it's far enough away.
It's not like it's gonna be fourth of July, is it?
No, no. I don't know that I've been to a wedding where they did fireworks. So it must be a new thing.
Yeah, it's a mapstone specialty.
Yeah, that's gonna be one of your specialties. Well, it's explosives, vice versa, yes, yeah. This is a tour of the barn and this is how to scare the cow. Okay. Um, anything else from the board that you see on the map or? Any? Proposal? Before we get into seeker? I need a copy of the seeker, have that one up there?
I don't have one. They've answered all of our questions that were put to them, you can just use.
Absolutely, you don't have a copy of the seeker, that's a page.
No, but we just need to answer these questions.
Do that. I don't think this. On the sign issue, I think it wasn't specific to this, Jamie. I was thinking of um professional signs. There's a limitation in the code, but uh it wouldn't really be applicable to this.
Well, we can, we can, it's part of site plan, so whatever we think, whatever this board thinks is appropriate. For the venue, the area, the safety of people coming by, like you don't, also don't want them.
Gossiping at the sign, that's.
Trying to, no, we're trying to find.
Yes.
As you're driving up to it, otherwise you'd have.
That isn't with you at that peak of the hill, we have had some traffic issues up there. Um because people tend to travel good fast on that.
Sure. Um and I assume you want the sign mounted so it can be seen in either direction, you know, one.
Directions, yeah, yeah. And it'll be a single sign, just two sided?
Yes.
Yeah, and it's gonna be in the house driveway.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. Sliding, the parking signs down here.
Yeah, then there's a parking sign down at the event parking.
Is that temporary or is that gonna be a?
That'll be a permanent sign.
And the speed limit, I think it's fifty, or is it fifty-five, it's fifty-five?
I don't think there's any signs, so.
Yeah, I believe it's fifty-five.
Fifty-five, yeah.
There, um. What, what? And I don't think we can put it in here, but I know, like, I had the town put a. Horse sign up before our was farmed and the county did it for us down at our barn in Nelson. We had just asked the county to make some. Pictures of a horse, so that might be something else to. Have a, see if the town, that's, is that a town road, county, county, see if the county would put. Some sort of a.
Picture of a bride.
Right, there you go. It would be worth looking into just to. Stop any potential disasters. Because I suspect there would be turning left into Kathy's property that are lost or probably stopped to get some um.
I don't know, it's pretty wide open.
They've opened it up in real space.
Yeah, yeah, since you're on the the landscape, you can open it up quite a bit.
Yeah. Are they, excuse me, Nick Bell, you know, but would they be allowed to put like smaller signs up, like they own a whole road, I mean, further down just to say ahead? You know, like.
About the applicant or the?
Like, like.
No. Yeah, no.
But that's how they're ahead or something.
Yeah, the county would have to put a sign up on that road, that would be in the county's right of.
But they couldn't do it personally.
No, no, you can nail something up on a telephone, but I couldn't take it down, but it might be worth just asking the county. You know, if that ahead, I've seen those, there's, you know, some very.
They could use temporary signs too.
Yeah, you could put a sandwich sign out and, you know, wedding ahead or something. Okay. So, um. Do I need a motion through seeker?
No, we're gonna go through seeker and then we'll do the seeker motion.
Okay. The following questions, will the proposed action create a material conflict with adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? Uh no or small impact, and we agree? Okay?
No, because it also is specifically um within the code, section on the agritourism.
Will proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
Well, there is an impact, but it's probably a small.
Yeah, because it's just weekends during the summer, so that would be uh small impact may occur. No. Uh will a proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact may occur. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No or small impact. Will a proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway? And that also would be no or small impact, because it is occasional. Will proposed action cause an increase in the use of electric energy and it fails to incorporate reasonable available energy conservation? Or renewable energy opportunities, that would be no or small impact. Everybody agree? Then if you don't agree, will the proposed action impact existing public, private water supplies? No or small impact. Uh wastewater treatment utilities, no. Uh because they, that's onsite utilities. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No or small impact. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, wetland, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna? No or small impact. Will the proposed action uh result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? Again, that would be no or small impact. Uh will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? That would be no or small impact. So, um.
So all the questions have been answered no or small impact, so the board may entertain a negative seeker.
A negative seeker motion, John makes a motion for a negative seeker declaration.
Second.
Carl seconds the motion, all in favor?
Hi.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried.
And this is an unlisted action for seeker.
Right. We will be the lead agency because there's no one else involved. Suspect. I didn't get your password, go ahead. Okay. So the only things we have outstanding are the signage, was everything else that was outstanding?
I'd like to suggest allowing a final engineering review.
Of the maps.
Yes.
Because. As a condition of the uh.
Sent to seeing them for the first time.
Right. And you're gonna try and get a uh an electronic copy for these guys?
Yes.
I I'm sure they.
Need it or your file.
Um. So, uh. Engineering review.
How about the lighting cut sheet, review of the lighting cut sheet?
Whatever, yeah, part of the engineering review. Um.
Um, it's also gonna be subject to um. Confirmation of the requirements of her accessibility and house.
Yeah, that's the third one, right.
Second one.
Well, there's three.
Okay.
There's the sign. The engineering review.
Got it.
And the uh legal review of the uh ADA. Um. So.
If I, if I can, Kevin, I if um.
You may.
I would like to, so I just. Again. I just got this now, so I compare. And I'd like to um. Go, go through it, and I I'm gonna read it just because the words aren't exactly the same on each, and there were some discussed for findings and conditions. Um so, subject to, you know, there'll be a most motion later, but um. The, the finding would be um use um for what's the board sent, the use proposed is appropriate and allowed in connection uh. With the overlay farm district of the town code section one sixty-five point dash nine point one, subject uh to the site plan review. And this board finds that the use proposed and outlined by the applicant, you don't need to write any of this up, give it to. An applicant um consists of special event space in the existing barn on the property, and this is an appropriate agritourism in connection with and supporting an existing working farm. And involves the adaptive reuse of a farm building.
But you're reading ours.
Yes.
Okay.
So that's the finding.
Right.
And we've got um the the conditions. Um and the conditions would be. There will be a property manager on site for the day of the event to oversee compliance with all guidelines and rules. The renting parties will be required to use a licensed catering company, no food preparation will take place at the event. All renting parties must obtain event insurance and a personal liquor license is outlined by New York State regulations. Any amplified music must be uh inside. The barn structure. In no event will the music exceed the ambient noise level. At the surrounding properties and or the decibel level of seventy dB at the property lines. Events shall only be on holidays and weekends, music must end by eleven PM. The event guests shall vacate the premises by midnight and any event lighting will be extinguished by. Twelve PM. Fireworks will be permitted only between the hours of nine PM to eleven PM and can last no longer than fifteen minutes. All renting parties must obtain the appropriate permit from the town codes officer. Trash from the event is to be cleaned up at the conclusion of the event and placed in the dumpster located to the north of the barn. The owners will remove the trash from the covered receptacles at the conclusion of each event weekend. Renting groups must secure enough portable bathrooms to serve the total number of guests in attendance, the portable bathrooms will be parked um as shown on the plan.
Jamie, can I ask a question on that? Um. What is the regulation for bathrooms for per? Occupancy? How many toilets do you have? Two hundred and sixty-six people. Is there?
Them address what they need because it's, they're not permanent in the building.
Okay. So there's no code for, you gotta have.
The idea would be if there's a problem.
It's their problem.
It's here, it's here, and that it can be enforced saying, hey, you didn't have enough, the mess. The parking space uh will remain a hayfield with gravel entranceway, handicap signage will be designated on the day of the event. It will be located closest to the walkway that leads to the barn, handicap guests may use the driveway entrance, just how to pull directly up to the barn to enter. Cars will be parked in the designated space uh on the plan. Um all lighting um will be in accordance with the approved plan. The house will be available to rent for the week of the event, the wedding party and or immediate family involved in the preparation of the celebration will be given code access to monitor usage. Unregistered guests will not be allowed to access. House, the house will be available to rent separately from the barn if the guests are not being hosted. And in accordance with agritourism, farm tours at pasture land dairy will be available to renting guests throughout the year. Um and. Is there anything I missed, do you think, John? Does anyone think I missed any?
Just a very minor, minor point, maybe just when you talk about the parking. I would put in accordance with the plan on that, fine as well.
This doesn't need to go to the county, does it?
It, it went, I believe we got, we got something bad. Yeah, it was, it was a no action. Yeah, and and we, we can put that as one of the findings, we'll go ahead and add that um the county, uh Tom knows it, we send to the county. Yeah.
Just this original stuff.
Right, alright, alright. No significant intercounty impact, we'll put that at the beginning of the, on the findings.
And uh it's, we didn't need anything with the DOT for the driveway, right? We have a letter in the file for that.
So those are the conditions and and the, I mean, those are the. Yes, the conditions of approval together with the following. Um the applicant needs to return with the sign and a sign plan to be approved by this board. Um subject to final engineering and legal review, including lighting cut sheets, subject to confirmation of accessibility. Requirements, if any.
That sign will include the lighting and. Color and whatnot.
You need more than what we have.
Could you just send like what? What, if you decide there's a size requirement or?
Yeah, we'll have to review, we're gonna review it separately, just because it's gonna be a. We need to look at the code requirements and just see what everybody thinks.
Right.
Or we'll be here all night trying to figure out the sign.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that's. Just trying to.
Get through it.
Yeah.
Jamie, so this. Uh that you just read becomes part of the.
Well, I didn't, it's it's the combin- combination of theirs.
But when you do combine it, it becomes part of the.
It is, it's going to become. It'll be in the resolution.
Okay.
It'll be typed right in the resolution. So we have, we have a finding about the agritourism and also finding that um uh county referral. Uh found no significant. Um intercounty impact.
DOT approved the roads. Do you understand where we're, we can approve it? Based on you. The homework, yeah, yeah.
Which we've done, you just have to review it.
Yeah, 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 yeah. So, um the other thing I had is the. Address on the map doesn't include the tax numbers. An issue and not so much. Just as the. Three one ninety-one property center road name. Excellent.
I can add there, you can put that on there, um.
Write it in.
It will be on. Can't write on it, please.
We can write on it.
We're approving the uh mapstone uh site plan for Mesto families map. The address is three.
One nine. Yes.
Never done this.
We do, we do have the tax.
Yes, we have it, I just don't.
Somebody ready? Everybody is in the public hearing.
Two. Yeah, it's zero two. Yeah. So. Uh, would anyone like to make the motion? Or? Go ahead, we talked a little bit about the sound level, do we have any idea of what seventy dB is?
It's a typical high rate. I made a period of standard route twenty when. A lot of traffic going on.
Yeah, so seventy-three dB would be voices loud at seventy.
Oh, sorry.
Seventy-three dB is voices loud is seven. It's where, you know.
Quite, it's not.
Ten dB is times ten.
Yeah. So it's above the ambient noise, typical ambient noise level of rural area, but it's about equivalent to Route twenty when it's going and pulling.
Like, there, quote-unquote outside.
Yes.
And we're also talking property lines, so. The one house that's next door to you. Is.
Music venue?
No, I'm, I'm down the street, is how far from you, quarter mile?
Oh.
Where the music would be?
Yeah.
And the other property, the property line behind you?
Miles.
Miles. And then.
Sue's probably in the closest, which is probably a mile almost as the crow flies.
Who?
Three quarters.
Well, our house. From the county center to our house is half a mile. Um, our property. Um. Which neighbors peaks, the road frontage is about a thousand feet, thirteen hundred feet. And then you've got the three small houses right here outside of the center.
So, so. To carry that much sound and still be at seventy dB that far away would be, it'd have to be. Pretty loud music. You have trouble by chilling yourself inside the barn.
Weddings.
One of my weddings, yeah. I've only had one though, uh, so far. Uh.
We got a place for you if you have another.
Might need to be a little further away. Uh. He's an attorney, so I'd be in a lot of trouble. Um. Alright, so, anything else, Jamie, before we fill motion out there to? Um. I suppose I could attempt the motions. Um. I will make a motion to approve the, um. Matt Stone families. Um. Wedding venue. Tax map number zero six, I think, that's zero two dash zero two point zero. Location. Thirty-one ninety-one Poppy Center Road, Mangus, New York, one three one oh four. In the town of Poppy, on Dodger County, New York. Based on the site plan. Um, dated. Three fifteen. Two thousand and twenty-three. Project number on the site plan is two two zero six zero one dash zero. The approval is contingent. On.
Free findings.
Free findings.
Previously stated.
As previously stated, which would be. The engineer's review of.
Oh, no, free findings, we have the free findings about the use, the county referral, the D O T.
Just for her, for the motion, does she need the specific?
No, we, we've already.
Is already included in there?
Included, I know, send that.
Based on the, I don't know.
The, the free findings, ten conditions. That we would conveniently, uh, stated and the three, um, additional, um. The conditions to be determined.
Any discussion? Who had a second?
I'll second.
Second's my John, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried, great decision. It's a party. Thanks for your patience and, you know, working on this and. Place does look great.
Thank you.
Yeah, it really does.
So you'll need to come back to the planning boards to finish the discussion on the signs.
Okay.
In another time.
Feel for that information.
Yeah, we're gonna review what you propose.
Okay.
I just, I just heard more details that you were describing over there, like materials and such, you don't.
Colors. Here you.
You'll give us guidance on that, and then we can.
Yeah.
So you, you think you have a certain requirement on the material?
No, I think that's something the board is gonna want.
They just wanna know.
No, yeah.
Does that mean that we have to vote at a later time on the sign?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's, and it's not gonna be, it's. Before we vote on it, we're gonna.
We don't need a public hearing.
Talk it over and we get. It might be a public hearing, but, yeah, we, well, we get at the time, you come to us.
I could email to you and you can see if it's anything that's worth.
Before it comes, before it comes here.
Yeah.
It'll be approvable, I would imagine.
That's what I hope.
That makes sense? Yeah, that would be nice. Yeah.
We'll do our best.
Okay, as far as the handicap accessible, that's something you just need to locate.
Search it.
Yeah.
And so you'll, we'll hear from you shortly on that.
Yes. Yeah, I will do the notation, if everything engineering wise is okay, I'll just send an email if I view that and everything. Or if it isn't. It looks, first blush, everything looks okay.
So you're back on. Are you gonna adjourn the meeting?
Couple papers. And. Did you have copies of this?
Yes, we do.
From here. Okay. Um. At this point of the meeting, that concludes our formal agenda. I do wish to, um, if anybody has been following. Um. Two that were on. Previous agendas, what their status is. Um, Perry application has to go to Z B A before, but we can act on it, and we're waiting for Z B A to have the next meeting. And the other one, the Strozak. Uh, based on comments at our last meeting, that they are formulating a new application on apps and. Trying to get that together, hopefully there are, are agenda comments. So. Um. With that, I know, um, in listening, uh, Dan has asked to say. Um. I think the board is aware, Dan, that you are proposing some changes at the side heritage health. Um. I've been advised that. In stages, pieces have come through, but the town finally has received a completed application from you. Um, they came in after the line of March first for this meeting, so that as long as everything's in order, next meeting, they would be on for. Formal site plan, application, review, and so on. Um. You got five minutes, keep it short, I know you wanted to speak tonight.
Exactly, and I handed out all the back. All of the survey and everything in for this meeting.
I think it was close, but I might.
It was, because I was driving towards that, but that's what it is. Um, but then, um. So. Process-wise, it's one thirty today, I'm with Jeff Steigerwald, who's about to do this, man, you guys have seen the opportunity document, what this can mean for Pompey and everything. And at one thirty to here, it's not on the agenda, the check has been cashed, the town cashed the check. Um, I worked, and we put the site plan, we got a survey, we did everything, I worked with Tim, and he did excellent, by the way. To do this, and there's a lot riding on it, and this whole thing could fall through because of timing. And the feedback that I got is about the D E C, and I need to explain what's going on with the D E C and the septic system at this brewery. Okay, in two thousand twenty-one, when we're hitting all those May and June rains, and the ground was saturated, a finger broke. And I needed Timmy, uh, Nicholas to come fix it, and he's on schedule to come fix it, and we had some seepage. On Dodge County Health came in, I sat with Emily and Scott, I believe his name is, and said, look, let's just get. You know, they wanna see a bigger system, let's get a bigger system. I started working with an engineer, he said, this is too big for me, you need to go to, like, Eric Murdoch at onsite. I got Eric on board. Full huge septic system, and I'm gonna tell you the number, okay? How many approved it? So Tim comes in, in the spring twenty twenty-two, starts building it. Somebody I nowhere says to Eric. What about the D E C Speedies permit? He's an engineer, paid him ten thousand dollars for this thing. He starts working on that, Tim's already working on the project, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I have a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar septic field sitting there, equipment in the silver barn, ready to go active, and since then. Going back and forth with D E C to try, they want me to now ship my brewery waste offsite, which is unlike any other brewery out there, we use the same chemicals as dairy farms. It's just stainless steel cleanout, that's it, and so I'm like, now I'm like, okay, well, we'll capture it in a tank and ship it offsite. And they're like, it has to be in ground with alarms, I said, well, we're working on this new project. I'm not gonna put it in ground right here just to move it there, so why don't we look at it as whole and I'll capture everything in one, and that's what the engineer's been trying to do. I can't make them go faster, guys, and I'm not asking you for us to start building now, but I have to get. For this to even move forward, I have to have semblance of the site plan for it. Issuing a C O or operating it is completely different, but we are not in violation, we spent a quarter, um, four thousand dollar a month payment on a septic field that I can't even use right now. It doesn't even make sense. And so I'm asking you to please just, like, look, consider the project for the merits of what it is. Don't, we'll get everything worked out with the D C, Eric's on it. Um, I'm gonna call in some people that I know to help to see if they can just help get some common sense into the process for it. But nothing's gonna open without that being resolved, but we are not. Septic system ass nigga, it's perfectly fine, because the ground's not saturated anymore, and we repaired the, we repaired the finger, so there's nothing happening. And this is, this is just, I, I, it's incredibly frustrating, because I know that I didn't do everything the perfect way the first time, and we're trying to do it with this one, and that's why you've gotten the documents that you have. So I'm asking you to please just work with me, because I don't wanna lose this opportunity. And that's all. And if I can be on next month. We're good about March first or anything like that, perfectly happy with it. Thank you.
For those. Questioning, there was a couple of documents, um, ones from on the Dodge County Health Department, and, um. There were some issues in there. That's what Dan's referring to, getting that settled. I knew down today that Dan and Tim and. On the name of some.
Emily.
Emily. Were on a phone call, and, um. That's. I wasn't getting that, but I know there was a phone call and stating that. What the county is expecting and. What Danny had to say.
John, I thought Speedies was perfect.
I'm surprised, uh, it's probably because it's commercial. Rather than.
Speedies would be involved?
Except, and I was gonna push back. I was gonna push back, there's no other brewery or egg, but I just said, I was like, let's just do it. Because I'm gonna, I know I'm gonna grow this business, you know, it was the biggest mistake I ever made, I shouldn't. Went to egg and markets right off the bat, now I'm stuck in this limbo. And I don't know what to do, I, honestly, your help could help, if we could just put some pressure on him, just help us get the plan, we'll make the acceptance, do it.
Planning boards. For me to put the pressure on him for that.
No, I understand this, yeah.
So. Anyway, so we have documents that you submitted and went through and, um. I'm sure. Hopefully.
There's, there's one more, if I can just give it to Susan. This is just. What's. This is the capture, so the whole new facility, all. Nothing going to septic, just capture the tank alarms and stuff, and what went to. That's what went to, this might happen, but yeah, if you want to.
So, yeah, I, yeah. Not that many. There's no. I mean, Dan, are you saying there's no waste gonna be generated from this?
No, what we, what we said to him was, look, we'll capture everything in tanks and pay to have it shipped off. There's thirteen to sixteen employees and about a hu- about seventy-five gallons of cleanout a day on the USDA plant, that's it. It's a closed facility, no general public. We would do a tour, but the bathrooms are for employees only, so we told them, we'll just put a holding tank in for septic, and then we'll put a holding tank in for brewery waste and USDA washout waste. You know, the chemical waste, and then we'll ship that off separately. And.
The, the board will need to see that that's an approved.
Well, yeah, we gotta get their approval, that's what we've been waiting on, and to say then, okay, then look at the septic field, see that it's working once it goes into. Into operation, and then we show that there's plenty of capacity, this thing's got seven tanks, aerators, like. Monitors, it's crazy, like, it's state of the art, and it's just sitting there, it just blows my mind.
So is there a problem that some of this city consider process and some is not? At our, I mean.
It's fine, feed all the grains, feed all the grains to the beefers. It's, it's nothing but detergent and sanitizer, like a, like a dairy operation.
The, the E C has been, uh, very vigilant these past twelve months, and we had them visit our first, our office. And, uh, and, and part of what they were talking us about, you know, fortunately, we were. Small quantity exempt, so. They, there was really nothing that we did, what was doing, that was a problem, but. Part of what we talked to them about was, there's processed and, and. Uh, you know, you're a processing plant, or you have other stuff that may not be, as they have a problem with that being mixed. Is, is it clear what their, what the issue is?
Same detergent that I use in the dishwasher in the kitchen is pretty much the same, and sanitizer is pretty much the same thing I'm using in the brewery, they're saying the brewery is an industrial application. And that's what I should have fought from the beginning.
Yes.
But, um, at the point now where I'm like, just let me capture it in tanks and pay to ship it off, because if this kills. This opportunity is not even worth it, I'd rather just pay to ship it off, you know, I, I, it's. I don't know how else to get through them, we've, we've put proposal after proposal out to them, I have an engineer, I've spent a lot of money. And I, I'm, I'm just frustrated behind, believe, these guys behind me will tell you.
The Speedies permit would be required for the construction or operation of a disposal system such as a sewage treatment. So that's where the Speedies gets involved.
Industry.
Yes, because it's really point source discharge for surface water, but if it's. A subsurface into the aquifer of kind of commercial level.
Yeah.
So that's why the Speedies got involved. Notify the D C.
No, it wasn't the county health, because they gave us stamped approval on the septic system, that's what started all the work. And then, and then I don't know where they, I don't know, somebody called or somebody did something, and then suddenly the Speedies thing came on, I never even heard of the word Speedies before, except in Binghamton. But I had no idea what it was, and. So I don't know who did, somebody did.
Yeah.
And it's just put a thorn in my side, and I, I don't know, like, I know egg and markets people, I don't know. D C actually met someone today, she, I guess her brother's had a D C, right, for the event that's happening at the brewery right now, so I'm gonna go follow up with her and see if I can do something there. Because I don't know, like, it, it just doesn't make sense.
It just typically requires a permit for the use of it, so you would think if the county approved it, this D C wouldn't have any problem approving.
The county approved everything you want to septic.
Right.
P E C came in and said, you have to capture your brewery waste and ship it offsite, because it'll kill your septic field.
Oh, yeah.
That's, that's what happened, and that, and that, and at that point, Timmy's already going with everything, I'm like. How do you stop the ball at this point, I can't leave all this open ground out there, yes. You saw, I'm sure you guys are driven by, we had to raise that whole field, that's all septic, say, I know the eighty acres in materials just in the real. And sad part is, it's not being used. So I said, pardon my frustration, it is with all that, and I'm doing everything I can, but I don't know what else I can do on that end. But if you guys can just look at this as far as, as, say, okay, cons- with D E C and county health approval on that subject, when they say go ahead and they approve the construction of the project, fine. The, the, the approval can be contingent on that, but just approve it based on the plans, and that can allow me to move ahead with establishing the L L C and doing what I gotta do on that end.
Yeah. Well, I know, I will look at everything and make sure I'll get my questions answered before the next meeting.
I will, I appreciate that.
Or does the same thing.
Thank you. So that's all I had.
Haven't been since time, I appreciate it.
I did notice on the plan, you probably should get the parking spaces laid out. In your site plan.
Yep.
I looked at the numbers. I looked at breakthrough this morning, so. Talked about creating more parking spaces, existing and how it's gonna change with the new building. Yeah, Dan, I had a question of. How many of those spaces are allotted for employees versus public?
Yeah, it's, it's, if, it's, I imprint, you have to look at the big one, but I did note it, the employees', um, parking is noted on there now. Um, it's on the backside, but I'll go through that with you for the meeting, but I'll make sure that it's all. I heard your comments about the, the space, making sure the ten by twenty and everything like that, so I was making mental notes on that, I'll make sure that's all set. By March. I heard your comments about the the space, making sure the ten by twenty and everything like that. So I was making mental notes on that. I'll make sure that's all set by March.
And Mattstone shipping there is offsite in the port bodies.
I should have done it right from the beginning.
Yes.
And so the barn, those are locked up, not used. Nothing, so.
I've heard just.
The septic field's gotta be approved first, then I gotta get water from county help to them. I'm gonna rent, maybe buy a trailer because it's just not worth it. Just not, I mean, the requirements of what you have to do to. To get them up for county health and then the water to them.
Mm hmm.
Apparently I can't use the water from the brewery. It has to be re-treated, so I I just don't see that happening. And if it does. It'll all come to me right right now. They're just locked up, so.
So then that, does anybody else have any comments or questions? Let's. Open up for one. Hold them up.
And so if if we're uh. Gonna ask some questions, we'll send them to you and you can get them to Dan.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So everything should be directed to you. Any questions on the application?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep.
Hearing. Something else? Silence is golden. Make a motion, do a adjournment.
I'll take a motion.
You're welcome.